All right. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you.
All right. Thank you all for joining in and participating with our roundtable discussion. And of course, please put your phones on mute, silent, or get it removed from your recording like I need to do. So today, I want to thank also our speaker, Ms. Toy Glennon, who is at the assessor's office. And she has been so graciously sending out our assessment, mailing it out to everyone. And we're going to get a chance to hear about some of the concerns that you all might have about those bills. So as usual, we start out with a prayer and do the pledge of allegiance. So Reverend Jones, you can take it away.
Thank you, Sergeant, and welcome to all. Our Father and God, we thank you as we've come in this ninth month of the year to still continue to work. In the midst of the pandemic, we want our elected official to come and to give us information so we can have better quality of life. We thank you for the presenters, and we hope that those that will get this meeting, we ask you to be blessed in his name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay. All right. I'm going to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty
and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you. So for any new comers that we may have, I'm Anna Johnson, County Council member for District Eight. And it's always a pleasure to have you all participate, whether you're in the district or not. So at this time, Ms. Glennon, I'm going to let you go ahead and share with us the information you have about our assessment.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. This is, I think, the third time, third reassessment since you've been on council that I've done this. But the last two, we were in person.
Yes.
There is a PowerPoint that's going to come up on the screen. It's not going to be up the whole time. I don't get PowerPoints as a reference, and I gather these are going to be sent out to you later, so you can use it as a reference, too. But I also use them to keep me on track, so I don't forget to say things. So one of the difficulties, Ms. Johnson, I talked about is we know that not all of you are going to be able to see it. But we've also been taking a lot of calls at our office and walking people through things. So hopefully, you'll still be able to visualize what I'm talking about even if you can't see it. So there's a few things, a little different. We did just implement a reassessment, and I'll go over in a minute or two what that is. There's things that people are usually interested in, have been for the past three reassessments. This reassessment, they don't seem to be asking those questions, and maybe it's because people have gotten used to stuff. So some of it I'm going to touch on pretty lightly, and some of it I'm going to go into a little bit more detail. So basically, what I'm going to cover is reassessment, what is it, why do we do it? What we sent you, so you'll know what you got, and if you didn't get it, you'll go, whoops, why didn't I get this? And we'll go over what taxpayers are calling about in a fair amount of detail, how you can look at information on the website, which is where it's going to be a little bit harder if you don't have the PowerPoint, but hopefully I can walk you through that. And then just a few other things like how to appeal and stuff like that. Typically, people want to know how to appeal, and we've really not been getting questions about that this time. I'm going to go over it anyway, just in case it's not been a real big deal. Typically, people want to know about the 15% property tax cap, and we've not been getting questions about that, so I'm going to cover it briefly. So let's start with what reassessment is. Reassessment is when we revalue every property in the county once every five years. I think most of you probably know instinctively that there's a relationship between the value of your property and what your taxes are. Reassessment, which is required by state law, resets that and reestablishes that relationship. Some parts of the county in between reassessments might go up in value an awful lot, and others might hardly move at all. So over the course of the five years, your people, people whose maybe value didn't go up much are paying more in proportion to their value than those in other areas. So it resets that relationship. There's some triggers, 15% cap, which means if your value's gone up a lot, it helps you out. But reassessment's required, and it basically just reestablishes that value-tax relationship. So what did we send you? Kristen, can you go down to slide seven, probably? Right, exactly. We sent you three things. The first was the notice. It's front and back. The center top of it is going to have a round logo, the county logo, it's a seal. And the back of it has, I'll admit, the whole thing is a lot of information. You should have gotten that. The third page of that is the objection form. And that, the logo on the top, kind of looks like a little house. It's the alternate logo the county uses, which is the historic courthouse. And then finally, there is a flyer, which is front and back. That has a lot of information. A lot of the frequently asked questions are on that. So those are the three things you should have gotten. They mailed on September 11, and Ms. Johnson discovered she didn't have hers yet. So
This located somewhere.
Well, okay, it might be on her dining room table. But if you didn't get those, call our office, 843-958-4144, and say you didn't get one. You're only going to get one if you own real property or you own a mobile home, but you should have gotten it by now. They were mailed on the 11th. The first of them literally did mailboxes on the 12th. I got mine on Monday, which was the 14th, I think. So what are taxpayers calling us about? They're calling us about what is a notice? How do I read the notice? That's a big thing they want to know, so I'm going to walk you through that. And then there's an interesting question, why isn't my name on the notice? There actually is a name on the notice. Question. Okay. There is a name on the notice, but the notice only contains the very first name on the deed. So if John Smith and Jane Smith own the property, just one of their names is going to be there. So we've been answering that question a lot. I'll answer that one. People are asking about 4% legal residence, is the assessment my taxes, and what was my prior value? So we're going to walk you through all of that. First off, what's a notice? A notice, we're required to send you a notice whenever your value goes up by more than $1,000. Now, we send you a notice when anything changes. So if we remove agricultural use, or remove legal residence, or you build a house, or you demolish something, we send you a notice even though we're not required to, because we just thought communications, it puts the information in front of you. But at reassessment, we send them to everyone. So basically, a notification is just telling you whether you get it this year or next year that something has changed. So can we go on down to the next? Yes. Okay, so the big thing, people. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want
Yes, ma'am?
Let me ask you a question. When someone demolishes a house, so that causes the property value to go down?
Yes, ma'am, usually.
So even though it might have been a dilapidated building, and for a while, it still has some value, probably.
It depends. Some of them only have $200 on them, because we know that they're completely unlivable. When it's demolished, it's not going to change anything, because that literally will probably round away. But yes, if we don't know that it was dilapidated, because we haven't seen it in a while, when people demolish things, we do send notices.
Okay, thank you.
This is the top section of the notice that you were sent. To the left and the right, there's a couple of stars. All that is, is we want you to know that on the left, that's our address. Our office moved about three years ago. We're no longer downtown. Now, some people have thought that that's where you go to pay your tax bills. We don't accept tax payments. We never have. It's not what we do. So wherever you've been paying your bills, you still pay it there. But this is where we're located, if you need to visit us or if you need to mail something. To the right-hand side, there's our reassessment hotline. It's a special line. It's just devoted to this reassessment. 843-958-4144. It's open until October 30, and there's 23 people answering those calls. The next thing people ask us about is this a bill? No. Peter Teklenburg, who's on the line, says bills are going to go out in a couple of weeks. But the funny little arrow in the middle, it says this is not a tax bill. It's not a tax bill. So what do people ask us about the most? Towards the upper third of your notice, if you're not looking at this on the screen, but maybe you have it in front of you, there's a box, and one of the first things, it's a line that says owner occupy residence. If you own and occupy your residence and have the 4%, that's going to be filled in. So if you're looking at this on the screen, that's where the red arrow is pointing. If your property is not at 4%, the next line, which says other real property, is going to be filled in. Now, knowing that Ms. Johnson's area includes a lot of rural properties, it could be a mix. If you've got too much acreage, both those lines would be filled in, because you can only have legal residence on part of it. And if you've got agricultural use value, that's the third line, where there's a green arrow pointing, that would be filled in. Also, off to the far right, there's another green arrow, and there's something that says agricultural market value. If that's filled in, it means you've got agricultural use. If you're looking at this on the screen, there's a, in that little box section, if you're not looking at the screen, off to the far right, there's a number, parcel ID. That's the number we use to identify your property. It's helpful if you have that. We can look things up by street address, but a street address can have a typo in it, but that's your parcel ID number. And then one of the things that used to be a big deal that people don't seem to care as much about now is your cap value. There's a little orange star off to the left, and then there's one off to the right. And if you can see this, I realize the scale's pretty bad. This person's being taxed on $56,000, but their house is worth $132. That's an extreme example. I'll admit that. And the final thing that's on there, people always ask about is, you know, they ask if the assessment is their tax. In this example, the assessment is $2,200 in round numbers. But I've plugged this one into the tax bills, and it's probably going to produce a $300 to $400 tax bill. So that's not your tax bill. And that's what people ask us the most about how to read the notice. There's also online, and we'll talk about that in a bit, an example notice is out there, and you can take the cursor on your computer and hover over it, and it will explain all these things. In addition, can you go to the next slide? This is more on how to read the notice. If you've got a lot of property, and parcel IDs don't mean anything to you, and maybe your mailing address isn't the same, this tells you which property it is. It also tells you the deadline to appeal, if you want to appeal, which is December 10. And then if you turn the notice over, there's a little box on the back, and it tells you everything I just went over, what is where. These are the things that people are asking us the most about. But mostly, it's do I have 4%, do I have ag use, that. So I would urge you to look at the notice, turn it over, look at the back, or go to the website and figure out how to navigate it, and read the flyer, because there's a lot of information on the flyer. There's alternates. You can call our hotline. They're taking, the hotline is designed for general calls. But if you want some to know something really specific about your property, you'll get a call back, and we've been calling people back every day. There's also the website, for those of you who spend a lot of time on the web. I live out in the country. My internet connection is not the best. Sometimes I Google, and it just sits there and spins. But the website's a good resource. So can you go to the next one? People have been asking us a lot about, and I realize this is a busy slide, I apologize, about how do I know if my property has 4%? How do I know if it has ag use? Even though it's on the notice, this is information that is always out there, has nothing to do with reassessment. So if you go to the county website, there's a section towards the middle of the website that says online services. If you click the part that says pay taxes and view records, that gets you where you need to be. A lot of people are used to clicking onto the GIS website, where the maps are. That really doesn't have a lot of information anymore. So if you click to this part that says pay taxes and view records, it will bring up a section that's blue, and you're going to want to click on real property record search. And then you can put in a variety of things. You can put in your parcel ID number, your name, your property address, and then it'll give you an option to get more information, so you click view details. And then there's a lot of options at that point. What I'm going to talk about is additional property info, but there's also tax information that maybe Peter Teklenburg will talk about later. So if you click on additional property info, go to the next slide. Here you're going to see that the person has legal residence. It says legal residence, and there's either a Y for yes or an N for no. It says ag use. In this case, there's an N. No, they don't have it. And it gives you the assessed value, and this is not the same property as on the other screen. I wanted a slightly better example. Here, right below that, there's market value and cap value. This property, the market value is $343,000, but the cap is $306,000. So that stuff that's here all the time, every day, that you can use. Once tax bills post, you can go to tax information, and you'll see some of that.
I have a question. So the legal residence, how do you establish that?
You have to apply. That's the first thing. And we're going to talk in a bit about some other information that's on the website, but the application is on the website. You have to own the property, and you have to occupy it as your legal residence. There's some other restrictions. We have, you have to have your driver's license, your voter registration, and a few other things there. If you lack any of the documentation that's required, give us a call, because sometimes there's ways to work around that. But you do have to apply, and that is the second thing I'm getting the most calls about, why don't I have it? Can I appeal it? Well, the first question is, have you applied? So if you haven't applied, call, and we'll try to get you to the right people. I will say that they're very busy fielding calls right now. Reassessment always causes a spike in legal residence calls. But this is one of the single biggest breaks a homeowner can have. A $3,000 tax bill will go down to $1,000. A $1,000 tax bill will go down to about 300. So it's a huge tax break.
Okay, thank you.
So the next thing is the website. Can you go on down? There's a special reassessment thing. If you go to the website at www charlestoncounty.org, there's what we call a banner. There's three or four of them that float through. One is about COVID, one is about the flood maps, one is about the census, and the other one is about reassessment. Click on the reassessment one, and it's going to bring up what you see to the right. It's going to bring up about, yes, ma'am? Okay, I think that's a baby. It's going to bring up about eight or 10 buttons that you can click on, one of which is the sample notice and sample objection form. If you go to that notice and hover over it, you'll see what's 4% and things like that. It's also going to tell you how to appeal, and it's got some sections on frequently asked questions. It's not hard to maneuver, and it's pretty short. So people usually ask about appealing. How do I appeal? The first thing is to use the form, which is the next one. We tell you to use this form, which we sent you, because that way we know it's an appeal. We'll probably get at least 6,000 of these this year, and we typically get 15,000 pieces of mail anyway. This gives us everything we need to know to identify your property, which you might forget to do. We've had people write us and say, I want to appeal my value. They don't put a return address on the envelope. They don't tell us where the property's located. They don't give us the phone number. We have no idea. But use this form. And on the lower left-hand side, most of what you're going to do with the form is on the bottom third. The lower left-hand side, go on to the next slide. All you have to do is sign it. We need an original signature and print your name. I don't know about you, but my handwriting is horrible, and nobody would know who it was. You can give us a estimate of value if you want to, but it's optional, and you need to give us a way to contact you, which is like your cell phone number or your home number. So there's that, and then the next slide. The lower, the right beside that is what do you want to do? The overwhelming majority of people want to appeal value. And if you don't think you have 4%, and you check that 6% assessment box, we'll send you a legal residence application. So let's go to the next one. And other than that, there is a section in the middle where there's some lines you can fill it in or not. Once you send that in, we're going to route it to the appraiser for that area, and they're going to call you for a conference. I like to tell people that this isn't a board. It's not a hearing. It's not, it's a conversation, one-on-one with the appraiser. The overwhelming majority of these are held over the phone. I have always liked face-to-face, because I think you communicate better when you can talk to someone face-to-face. But these days, people are busy. Most of them are held over the phone. And the overwhelming majority of these, two-thirds of our 2015 reassessments ended with this conversation with the appraiser. If it doesn't end there, we will send you another form that we will require some information. But that, it really starts as a conversation, and we are actually already handling some of these. We've gotten a few in already, even though it's only been a week and a half, and we're already responding to people, which is really good. That means people are doing things fast. One thing I would say is if you decide you want to appeal, do so soon. About half the people wait until the last two weeks, which will be in December, and you don't want to be at the end of that long line. I would do so soon. Now, you can't wait until tax bills will come out in a couple of weeks, if you want to know what your impact on taxes is. But once you've established that, send it in. Early bird gets the worm. You really want to do this now. So let's see what else we have. Pretty much it about appeals. It starts with using that form and a conversation. And until you go to the Board of Assessment Appeals, or unless you go to the Board of Assessment Appeals, you're not in front of a bunch of people, and only one half of 1% of properties in 2015 even went to the board, and they were almost all commercial property owners. So what's happened to the real estate market, I think most of y'all probably take the paper or something. Values are up quite a bit since our last reassessment. The date of value for most of our properties is what it's worth in December of 18. Before that, it was December of 13. They've gone up about 20% to 25%. The residential market's particularly strong right now. I'm sure commercial isn't that great, like hotels and restaurants. But this is value changes. We're not getting a lot of questions about value changes. So can we go on?
Yeah, I'm not sharing.
Okay, go on. Okay, so the 15% reassessment cap is something, I just said that market values are up 20% to 25%. The 15% reassessment cap means you won't be taxed on that much. And you can tell again on your notice by looking at that, where those red stars are, that you're not being taxed on that much. Again, we're not getting a lot of questions about that. So let's go to the next slide. Basically, I just want to say, read the notice and the flyer that came with it. Call us at the hotline, 843-958-4144, or go to the website to look at stuff. And if you're going to appeal, use the form and start the process early in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, I always like to go over who does what. I'm the assessor. I'm a department head. My office values real property. We approve legal residence and agricultural use. Peter Teklenburg, who is on this with us, is the auditor. He's an elected official. He just weighed. They value personal property, your cars, your boats, et cetera. They also handle the homestead exemption. And he's had a big program on that recently, which I think he's going to talk to you about. That's mostly for people who are over 65. And he calculates and mails the tax bills. And next slide. The treasurer, Mary Tinkler, what you care about most is that she accepts the payments, and hopefully, you don't deal with delinquent tax very much. But Tammy Frey, like, is a department head who deals with that. But she also deals with business license fees and accommodations. So I always like to end with that. And I'll take any questions you may have about anything.
Anybody?
Yes, Reverend Jones. My question, my question is, on the assessment of the property, if you are a disabled veteran and don't pay taxes, how do they assess the value of your property? And also, we're in the rural area, what you're saying about sending the bill to the people. Some of these people do not know that between the 6% and the 4%, we do it in the simplest term that they can understand. Thank you.
Oh, Peter, you want to answer the disabled question and bill questions?
Disabled, if you're disabled, you don't get a bill, because you don't pay taxes on real property. But how do you know what the value of your is if you don't get that?
Oh, okay, that's a little bit different. We actually, if it's totally exempt, which is what a disabled thing is, we don't value it at all until it ceases to be totally exempt. We just don't do it.
So, okay, well, just it just me and my wife, but if something happened to us, how would I know how to get it? Would we have some kind of record to let him know what he needs to do, since we are exempt?
Once it transfers to, let's just say, your son or daughter, whoever, we will send them something about 4%, and we'll send them a notice about the value. But as long as it's exempt, our office doesn't deal with it. But Peter, you all do a little bit.
Okay. And the other question was about getting the letter and the note. Where we live in the rural area, there's a lot of people that own that old property, and a lot of them are aged property. And how would they go by understanding how they would, you know, put it for the 4%? Because some of them got, like, maybe, say, for example, five years, they're living, but they're paying tax 4%. How would they be able to reduce their taxes, maybe on that property, and pay 6% on the rest? I don't know how that, how would that work?
Well, first, they do have to apply, and there's links within the website to that. But we also, if they don't have that 4%, if they call our office, we'll send them an application. Now, Irish property, a lot of the things we ask for doesn't fit real well. So once they get the application, they should probably call us, because we've worked with people to look at family vitals, to see if they have an interest, things like that. It can get complicated, but we try to work with them on that. We've got an awful lot of properties that are Irish property that do have 4% and have homestead. Now, if they're older, if they're past 65, Peter will go into this with you, they can get an even bigger break, but they will have to apply. But if that 4% doesn't show up on that notice that we sent them, they should call us, and we can at least send them an application, and that way, you know, but they're probably going to have questions. They're going to need to talk to somebody as opposed to just filling it out, because it's Irish property.
Well, there are a lot of elderly people. When I say elderly, I mean they're up in age that probably don't have the understanding of the tax bill. And like I say, if you're like me, I'm 70, but I got a little bit of understanding about it. But there are other people that might not, and a lot of them lose their property because they don't stand the tax bill. And when you go on the web, you're talking Greek to some people, because they don't know how to do it. I don't know what simplest form that we could get to help them.
Peter?
Yeah, Reverend Jones, I'll tell you about some of the things we're doing right now. And actually, the timing of this question is actually very good, because Councilmember Johnson has really been working on an innovative program that sort of connects with a program I've been running that I think will be the first step at really trying to address the main point you're getting at. As means of an introduction, let me tell you what my office has already been doing in the last year or two, and then how we're looking with Councilmember Johnson's help to expand that summit, which I think is going to answer some of your concern. First thing is, as Toy was telling you, my office handles the homestead exemption, which is a reduction in the taxes for anyone over the age of 65 or anyone who's disabled. It requires you to actually apply with my office. Now, what we've done is we've tried to make it easier to apply with my office. We've put stuff online to where you can apply online. You used to have to apply in mail. We've been doing a lot of these other things. But what we found is that there are a lot of folks in Charleston County who were eligible and not receiving this benefit. And granted, state law requires the property owner to apply. But what we did, we were first in the state to do this, we got a list of everyone over the age of 65 in Charleston County. Then we crossed it with everyone who had 4%. Typically, you need to have 4% to have, to get homestead exemption, because you can only get it on your primary residence. We took a list of everyone over the age of 65 who had 4%, and then we looked at anyone who did not have the homestead exemption and assumed that those people were going to be eligible for it. The list in Charleston County, believe it or not, was close to 5,000 people. We found 5,000 people in Charleston County who were probably eligible. And in fact, when I say probably, of the 5,000 letters we sent out, only two people called the office who were not eligible. There may have been some people who threw it away, but of the 5,000 people who we said, call our office. We want to check and make sure we give you this. And we got about 3,000 of them signed up for the homestead exemption last year. That still leaves about 2,000 that we've been trying to reach out to. But here's the, here's how we're expanding this. The Councilmember Johnson came to me, and we tried to reach out to some of these folks, and we've been consistently working on it. But she has asked two things, and I'll get, and I'm sort of expanding a little bit and getting to your point. But one is, how do we make sure folks who are at risk of losing their home in delinquency, how are we making sure that they have all the benefits they're entitled to? Because before we take away someone's home, I'm not my office that does it, but before someone loses their home to taxes, shouldn't we make sure that they have every benefit they're entitled to? Now, if they have every benefit they're entitled to, and they don't pay their taxes, there's not too much I can do. And so the program has really been trying, or what we're trying to do, is, number one, focus on the people who are most at risk. And that includes some folks who are older. And the first thing we're doing is ensuring that they are eligible for homes, if they're eligible for homestead exemption, that they get it. Because what this does is, we have Because what this does is we have people, especially folks who are older and are living on a fixed income, especially in areas, rural areas, that homestead exemption could make the difference between them being able to pay their taxes and not pay their taxes. Having their tax bill go down from $600 to $150 or to $200 may make all the difference. Um, so that was, that's the first sort of thing we're getting to. It's a little outside of my reach, but my office is sort of getting into it a little bit and it, and sort of helping facilitate it with Councilmember Johnson. But the other side of that is, we can also take a look at where these tax bills are being sent and, and just looking at those, have a better idea of folks who very, and, and look at the ones who are at 6% currently and have a very good idea of some folks who may be eligible for 4% by just looking at it. If, if you looking at type of property, for instance, a rural piece of property and seeing that it's been going to the same person year after year after year, and then also noticing that's at 6%, I think our first assumption is this person very well may live there. Now, there's, there are reasons they, they may not be eligible for 4%. Maybe they do live there, but maybe they have another house that they're claiming 4% on. But based on that, we might have a list of folks that are at 6% who need to be reached out to. And some of those folks, as you brought up, are folks who may just not understand. They may just not understand the difference between four and six. They, they may not understand, uh, or know where to go. They may be intimidated, uh, because of a lack of knowledge or because of other things. Um, in, in, for coming to my office or coming to the assessor's office. Uh, they may, there, there are multiple reasons. But I think what we're going to try to do is to the best of our abilities, we're going to identify these people we think fit the most potential. That, that, we're not going to be able to get everyone doing this. But I think there are a lot of folks and we're going to reach out to them directly. Um, and we're going to reach out to them more in their community. And some of that is going through, uh, through the community, through churches. Some of it may be going through, uh, through community organizations. Some of it may be going directly to their house. Um, I do not think it is far-fetched to believe, um, in the coming months uh, and within the next year, we may have people who are either trying to call or knock on that, a person's door physically, um, to identify whether or not they qualify. And not everyone's going to qualify, but I guarantee you, we're going to find some folks. And when we do that, uh, we're going to ensure that they're paying what they should pay. And if they paid too much, uh, they're going to get refunds, limited on, on how many years we can go back. But if they were eligible for it this year and we don't find out till next year, we'll get them their money back for the taxes they paid. So, um, I think, and, and just to be quite honest, I'm not aware of any other program within the state of South Carolina that's doing this thing. We're just sort of getting off the ground on it, but we've put ourselves in a position where, uh, we're, we're, we're tired of saying, you got to come to us. We're going to do our best and it's a try, we're just going to try it. And we're going to try it specifically in areas, uh, specifically where, where Councilmember Johnson represents and maybe some areas that, that Councilmember Schwerz represents. But I think our best place to start are the rural areas. Uh, Orlando, McLeanville, Edisto, Johns Island, Wamoa, uh, St. Paul's area. I think that's where we start because I think that's, frankly, that's where it makes the most sense. We're talking about folks who've lived in those properties for a long time. Um, and, and, uh, and I think we're going to be looking for folks, you know, who are a little older. Uh, I mean, they're, that's how we're going to do this to start. That's not to say that there are people who aren't 35 years old who are living in North Charleston or the city of Charleston who are eligible and not missing it. But, um, we're going to go after the, what I think are the easier ones to identify first and we'll take it from there.
Thanks, sir. I, reason I say that congregants, uh, in my age level, uh, right, 65, and I don't know whether you got the letter to say whether they were at 4% exempt. I'll say if I had me a three acre property and I give my son or daughter a property and their move is cut off, they're eligible for that 4%, but not eligible for the, you know, the, uh, reduction. Because age, a lot of people that are 65 and over don't know that you can get a reduction in your tax bill. And that would be something good. I, I mean, right now, we on Zoom, we are online with our parishioners. It'll be a great opportunity, the understanding of it, of y'all giving me some paperwork by email that I can explain to the older congregant, we can have some people go ahead so that y'all won't have to do all the footwork, but some things will be done for you.
Well, I certainly thank you, Reverend Jones. Uh, I didn't forget about you and, um, and doing this, I am going to be using some interns to help me with it because I'm very concerned that, uh, a lot of people are losing their property and probably don't have the right category for, for, uh, the rate change. So when we, um, need to call on you, I certainly am going to make sure that you get the information so that you can share it in your community.
You may.
For volunteering.
I would like to give credit where credit is due to the delinquent tax office. When people talk to them, a lot of times they ask them questions about that and they refer them to us. And if somebody's property is going to sell and that we find out the 4%, they'll call us and they'll say, can you expedite this? And a lot of times they'll cut their bill enough. So I have to give credit to the folks in delinquent tax for asking that question because they do. And another thing we do is we send about 4,500 to 5,000 letters and applications out a year. Anytime a property has a deed on it. Um, and then when they don't follow up, within about three months, we send a second one. So we do that. And we've also run address mismatches, which is sort of what Peter is talking about, um, ourself. We don't do that every year because it's tedious, basically due to how the computer system stores stuff. But we do that every few years, looking for stuff like that. So, but I have to give credit to the delinquent tax department because when they, someone talks to them about it, a lot of times they realize that they should be able to apply. And, you know, if we have to work with somebody because it's that day or the next day, we'll do so. And Peter and then have also then supplied homestead. But he's right, you can usually go back a year or two on stuff. It's helpful.
I have a question. Could you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was busy trying to find my documents and I had them, I had three pieces of property. Most definitely, I, I bought a piece last year and I'm not sure if we screwed up, but, uh, I was looking at the area that shows the ratio and I understand the 4%, which is the reduction. I, I show it on the house I'm living in, but the house that I purchased also showed 4%. So one, I think I might have screwed up some documentation. I'm not living in, it's a house that I will raise and destroy here very shortly. But how do I go and make sure I've got the right, uh, documents covered?
Um, you're supposed to tell us now, did you actually buy it in 19, 2019 or did you buy it in 2020?
No, I, I bought it last year, in July of last year.
It should have come off. Um, I would say call our office.
Okay, what, what number? Okay.
And give whoever answers from that parcel ID and explain that to them because you're supposed to tell us.
Okay.
Um, but I'm surprised that it didn't come off because there's actually a computer program that is supposed to do that.
Right.
And I'm surprised about that, so.
Not a problem. So, but the area I'm looking at, I was in and out, but the ratio section, which shows that number, i- if it's .04, that's the percent we're talking about, right?
Yes, sir. If it says .04, that means it's got the 4%. Um, and like I said, that, that is something that we're supposed to take care of automatically. You should have actually gotten something. So I'd be interested, could you just, I'll at least look into that. Could you give me the parcel ID and maybe your phone number if you don't mind sharing it? And I'll look into it and I'll call you. Or I can just call you and we can talk privately. How about that?
Yeah, that'll work. Uh, how do you want, you want me to give what the parcel number now?
Um, if you want to, or you can just give me your phone number and I will call you.
Yeah, let me give you my number.
That way you're not putting your business out for everybody.
No problem. I don't have any business, trust me, but that, I'll give you my number.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
It's 703-209-5509.
Alrighty, um, I will try to call you back, uh, Mr. Roper this afternoon, but it could be tomorrow.
That's fine.
We'll talk about this and I'll look it up and I'll see what's going on.
Yeah, now, bottom line, when will, will we see the tax on these again?
That would be, yeah, Peter, uh, that should be pretty soon, right?
Yeah, um, we're, they're supposed to be out next week. Uh, we're, we're wrapping it up. We'll have them at the printers next week. Um, those should be online certainly by, uh, the first. And I think they will be, uh, in people's mailboxes, uh, by starting on the first and, and probably take about five or six days for them to all show up. Uh, we're, uh, we're sending out a couple hundred thousand tax bills. And so they, they mail them as they print them. Um, but, uh, uh, by, uh, within the next two weeks, you'll see every, everything, everyone will have a paper copy.
Okay. I'm not rushing it, but thank you.
No, I know, no one is.
Anybody else? Oh, okay. Oh, I did have one question, Ms. Glennon. Back to the 15% um, cap.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you do the assessment, uh, the bill cannot, uh, you're not going to assess more than 15% higher of the previous value of the house, right?
Right, it's a value thing, it's not a bill thing. So if the property was, used to be valued at 100,000 and now it's worth 145, um, as long as the property didn't change hands, we would send, we'd have sent you a notice with a cap value of 115 and that's what your taxes would be based on. Now, typically at a reassessment, millage is going to become smaller, which is one of the components of your tax bill. But you can pretty well be assured that if that value doesn't go up more than 15%, that bill is probably not going to go up more than 15%. So that's definitely one of the benefits. I think Peter's better able to address millage than I am. That's his area.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. But now, if the property gets, um, uh, sold in the next two or three years, in between your assessment, totally different ballgame then.
Yes, ma'am. If the property sells, it goes up the next year to full market value. So that property I just talked about that was only being taxed on 115, but it's worth 145, maybe it sells for 145, that next year, we will inform the person that the value has gone up and it's going to take that 15% cap away. But they'll get a notice about that. So that, that is one of the things, we probably send 15,000 of those type of notices every year, which is a lot, but that's because properties are trans, transferring, they're selling.
Okay, and, um, I noticed, so you have the assessed value of the property and then you have the, what you, I think is called the real value of the property. But, um, is that the real value, is that, um, pretty much what someone would appraise the property for outside? Or is it that, that's a lower amount?
It's, uh, it's probably what the property was worth in December of 18, which the market's gone up since then. Um, it's, it should be close to what somebody would have appraised it for outside. We don't aim to be low and we don't aim to be high, but we're doing almost 200,000 appraisals as opposed to somebody who's doing one for the bank. But it should be market value, it should be what a willing buyer would pay a willing seller.
Oh, in 2018?
Yes, and most of these are going to be in 2018. It will actually say something else if it's a different date, but most of them, most of these values are now almost two years old.
So then that same value though would be like that for five years?
Yes, ma'am, unless the property sells or unless you.
Yeah.
Build an addition or do something else to the property.
Well, I mean in reference to your bill because somebody might go online and look and see, well, oh, the value is at this amount now, you know, according to, uh, the information we have on the computer. But that value is as of 2018, not as of 2020 or further down?
Yes, ma'am. It actually, um, we've got a little thing in the middle of the notice. It's actually a couple of paragraphs unfortunately that talks about that. We tried to make it clear, but it's, it's complicated. It, it's not easy to make clear. But if your notice says assessable transfer of interest, ATI in the middle, then you're going to be what the property was worth in 2019, not 2018. Um, but that's very, very specific reason that's stated on the notice.
Okay, okay. Anyone else have any questions, uh, in reference to our topic here? Okay, well, uh, I certainly want to thank, uh, Ms. Glennon, uh, for preparing all those, um, slides for us to be able to understand the bill better. And, uh, Mr. Tacklenberg, thank you for coming and joining with us. So we need to have you at some point later on, uh, probably in the next year.
Well, tax bills are just going out, so, uh, if anyone has any questions, uh, feel free to call me. I'm happy to, to answer those. Um, my number and information is certainly on the tax bill. I'll wait for it to come in, or you guys can wait for it to come in, uh, to ask the questions. But happy to come and, come back anytime and talk about it or talk about homestead uh, because it's a proberate time, that's for sure.
Well, maybe we should include you in part of our, uh, next roundtable. You'll have the bills out by then. Okay.
They better be.
All right, well, um, for our next month, um, we are to have the ombudsman to come and talk with us about his duties and probably share some information about the, uh, new, um, mapping information from FEMA. I understand we've got some reductions coming out to talk about, so that'd be a good thing. So until next time, Ms. Hesse, do we have anything else to add on before we close out?
I don't think so. The next date is October 28th at 12:30 and we'll be doing it Zoom. So I'll send out a notice today or tomorrow.
And thank you for the good job that you're doing to make sure we get the notices out. Thank you. And so, all of our participants, uh, thank you very much for joining in with us this time. And until next time, see you later.